Hi, thank you for being here. I'm Jeanette Tuchard, Chair of the Planning Commission. Welcome to a unique event adjoining the Conservation Commission and the Planning Commission. And the origin of this meeting is that Guilford's Natural Resources Inventory compiled by Kathy Smith is now complete, not quite formal yet to be in the web site. But we wanted to first this evening with our Chief of Plan and Consultants from Du Bois-en-Beign, Dan Melt and Emily Wills, to really review some of the findings from this terrific Natural Resources Inventory and talk about priorities for conservation in Guilford and strategies that we look to look at to keep Guilford Guilford. I know that throughout our town plan, as I remember then, we want to keep the character of Guilford Guilford. So this is just a start of conversation. We hope to hear from many voices this evening. I'm going to start by just giving you a little bit of biographical information on Emily and Dan. So I'll start with Emily over there. She's a professional landscape architect, also has a Master in Environmental Sciences and Policy. She has 15 years of experience with multi-dimensionary projects, including land planning, parks and trails, stormwater ban facilities, transportation, and complete streets. She's also provided environmental site assessments, forest delineation, and environmental restoration. They can see, really comes from a strong conservation background, involved in multiple projects, Green Rivermont and in the Northeast. And Dan Melt, sitting here, is also a professional landscape architect, a certified planner, as well as a professional paverist. So lots of skills to bring to the nice meeting. He has 17 years of experience developing plans for community open space, including parks, trail corridors, and streetscapes. His experience includes master planning, and he's currently working in Enfield, New Hampshire, to inventory and recommend controls for invasive species on public land, something that was welcomed through in Guilford, and is leading the planning and meeting engagement for the Richburg Village Master Plan in Richburg, Vermont. He's provided master plan design and development for park projects in Key, New Hampshire, and Hinesville, Vermont for months. The bodies always sound very dry, so I want to just take a second to just give you a little bit more about what I've been doing with Emily since late March. Because that's when we really kicked off this effort for the purpose. In late March, Dan Melt came to Guilford for a town tour, and we were able to entice residents to meet with us at the country store, at the fairgrounds, and at Green River Hamlet, which is one of the most people places in Vermont that we're doing here. And I was got to watch them ask questions, listen really well, and you could see their energy and enthusiasm start to really build. They were making connections about things that would never occurred to me, kind of in my own little bubble. So it's just been tremendous to see them really get to know Guilford, get very passionate about Guilford. This is not an academic exercise for Dan Melt. They really care about Vermont, Vermont communities, and its landscape. Dan in particular, so this fifth trip to Guilford since March, he came to Guilford University, came to the production of Bar Town. Dan and Emily were here last weekend at the fairgrounds. Emily came to Corvadon to meet in the rain with her family. So these people are really invested in understanding Guilford, learning what we value, and helping us have a dialogue about Guilford and its future. So I'm a Scott and turned over to them, and I hope we both enjoy the evening and hope we all learn some great stuff.
Wow, thank you, Jeanette. Thank you all. This is really fantastic. When we wanted to put on a joint meeting between the Conservation Commission and the Planning Commission, it's of course open to the public. That's part of this process. Guilford's done a ton of fantastic planning at a high level, and some of this work may help the community make decisions about its future, but we don't have answers at all. And we just really started this process in March, like Jeanette said. And so while we do have experience with a lot of communities, we have letters after our name, which may or may not point towards some of that experience and expertise. We are really here tonight to take a high-level view of what is fantastic about Guilford, what's in this Natural Resources Inventory, which will be shared shortly, from the different forest types to the river corridors. But I'd really like to hear Emily and I tonight, a lot of the stories about, Jeanette mentioned, character. What is it about Guilford that resonates here, but also here? And it's something even with our background in soils and plants and animals and wildlife, we're still trying to figure out about. We're driving around a certain stretch of road, and the sun's hitting the rocks and the trees just right, and why does that sometimes touch our heart? Or why does our own little patch of land that we have, where we tend the garden, and we can see the stars through the trees, or you know, hear the rain on the roof, why is that meaningful to us? And why is that worth conserving? And so conservation, of course, we think about the ecology and the invasive plant encroachment, and phosphorus runoff into our streams, and you know, issues of pollinators which affect agriculture and many number of other things, and the relationship to recreation. But conserving is also about kind of the traditions that infuse the land and then speak back to us. And it's a lot of that that, I don't know if we can get to everybody, but everybody who'd like to just speak about how your relationship to the land of Guilford is meaningful to you will come away tonight with a lot more information than we had, and hopefully as part of this larger strategic planning process, you'll feel at least this aspect of it, you'll feel that you've been heard somewhat. I also have cards up here, and honestly, yeah, we both live in Randolph, which is about an hour and a half up the road, but if there's something else that you folks would like to share with us in person, if there's a property or a place that's meaningful to you, we'll be back down this way, and we'll walk the land with you, and you know, here we have to say about that. So again, a lot of this is about listening and us learning. I have a little presentation tonight about the strategic planning process and sort of where we're at just a few months in, what it means, and then we're going to dive into some of the maps that are included anyway in the inventory document. We're going to start overlaying some of the layers together, so you can start to see, okay, there are forest blocks, there are wetlands, and how these all overlay to each other and impact habitat and water quality and what have you. And so we're going to take a bit of a dive into that sort of science. And I'd like everyone to feel they can just ask questions as we go along. Does that all make sense? Yeah, alright, great. And we'll see if the tech works tonight, and my computer doesn't overheat, and we're good.
Yeah, I think it's worth us to try to speak a little louder if you could.
Alright, I will speak more louder. And hopefully not too long-winded, because apparently that happens, I've been told.
I'll give you a little...
Yeah. I used to play music. I was actually a music major in college, with a minor in plant ecology, and then kind of put the creative and the plants together and landscape architecture. And a lot of jazz and blues, you know, it just gets so into my head that occasionally something, yeah, would have to kind of kick me when I was soloing or doing something like that. A lot of traveling around the state that way, playing music. And so tonight, tonight's plan is an introduction to the process, like I said, discussion of the connections and character. When we talk about character, we are talking about the views and the land, and kind of what hits us as meaningful. We're not talking about people or certain types of people necessarily at all. I know sometimes when we talk about the characters of places, you know, oh, this type of person or that type of person, that's not what we're talking about. We're really talking about kind of what hits us in the gut from a land standpoint and what's meaningful. Some highlights of the Natural Resources Inventory. Kudos to the town, it's a really great job. We're excited to at least have them share, have the graph chair with us. And we're going to do those overlays, maybe jump onto the Agency of Natural Resources Atlas, which is a fun tool to be able to see information about your own property. You can see its boundaries, you can see if there are any wetlands, you can see what kind of soils you have, which is really useful as you're stewarding your own properties, sometimes to understand the soils. And then we're going to ask top three wish lists for conservation initiatives. And that's not just limited to the Conservation Commission or the Planning Commission. So please, in the back of your mind, as you think about what conservation means to you, there's going to be no wrong answer, but at the end of the day, Guilford does have this opportunity to wisely and appropriately spend your money on things in your community. And even though it's coming from the state and federal government, we recognize that we all are contributing to that money, so of course it makes sense. Even though we've done all this planning, the ARPA Committee did a fantastic survey, but I think part of the reason Emily and I are here is there was a recognition, well, we're not sure everyone was fully heard about, you know, their individual interests. So part of this strategic planning process is to have things like this tonight and get people together. Again, Emily and I were at the library raffle at the fairgrounds on Friday night. We're going to be talking with business people, and we want to keep this conversation going and open as much as possible. And then opportunities for additional outreach, opportunities and connections. So we don't know what we don't know, so that's what we also want to hear tonight. So the strategic planning process is community planning, it's bottom-up, it's participant-driven, and it tries to articulate with a certain degree of specificity, realistic, short, medium, and long-term priorities. And those could be in a year or two, they could be five or 10 years. Once you get further out than about 10 years, it kind of becomes low resolution in terms of what's possible. It's important, you know, Guilford's been around for over 250 years. What do you want to leave to the next generation, the generation after that? Certainly that's part of the vision, but what this process here is, and along with the ARPA survey and the 2014 visit and planning work that you've been doing, it is trying to drill down a little bit more into critical investments, whether it's in conservation or the schools, or infrastructure, or recreation, or transportation, or trails, or culverts, you know, whatever it is. And seeks to expand upon that work done in, like the Vermont Council on Rural Development Action Plan, fantastic document. I expect a lot of people here were involved in that process. If you all want to raise your hand if you were involved in that. Very cool. Okay, great. And so, we weren't here, so if you have insights into how that work might also inform some of the stories about, I think, connections, wonderful. The 22-2030 Town Plan, which is a fantastic document, if you haven't looked at it, it's right online on the Guilford website, and other work. And combined with the conservation principles we'll be discussing tonight, those are the real touchstones for this process. Understanding your desires and your aspirations for yourselves, for your family, for your community, what have you, for your own land, and how that connects to other people around in other towns and the county, that's super important, and it's essential to the success of this process. And it's community ownership and open collaborative decision-making. Again, nothing has been decided, you know, there's some ideas that we've kind of inherited that you've already spoken up about, and we want to honor and respect that, but in terms of what Emily and I think the answer is, we don't know. You tell us, really, it's that simple. No outcomes are predetermined. And so the strategic planning process is a tool for accountability, 100%. When you put something down about the vision for the community, the next generation of the current and the next generation of leadership has a guidebook, and you all do as well. And so you can point to, here we have this strategic planning document, which we'll eventually produce, along with making some maps about certain locations for ideas. But it's an opportunity for you to hold that leaf to the fire, no offense, quite frankly, about what you as a community decided. And it's a communication tool, which is what we're doing now, but it's also an opportunity to convey with some degree of specificity what you all are saying tonight and what we heard last Friday, what we're going to hear from businesses, and what we kind of learned through looking back at all the documents that we've studied in preparation for this. And it's perhaps most importantly, a way to prioritize all of the really cool things you could do in this town. There were a lot of desires, from recreation to infrastructure, to things in the school, or how you all think some of the monies that have come in are best spent. One of the hardest things is figuring out priorities, what to do first. But part of the strategic planning process is recognizing that, oh, conservation is aligned with transportation, is aligned with recreation, and any number of other things. And so if you can kind of stack those up in time, you can recognize, oh, you're replacing a culvert. Well, wouldn't that be a great idea to build that culvert so wildlife can get through? And you see the exact same money, but just think about the design, because some of the information in the Natural Resources Inventory talks a lot about wildlife connections. Habitat fragmentation is a big deal. You're fortunate in Guilford to have a lot of intact forest areas, but we all know certain breeding populations require a degree of land depending on the animal, or certain animals, you know, whether they're amphibians, or bears, or moose, have certain travel corridors that are necessary. And if you can do one project and do it with something else in mind, like recreation, and so maybe it is creating a bike path through a culvert that's also used by wildlife. You know, why not? And so a lot of the strategic planning process is us putting those elements together in a way that every dollar that you spend, you're maybe getting three or four back in return, because you're addressing multiple priorities at the same time. So that's really our hope, and that's why as a prioritization tool, strategic planning is actually incredibly useful, because it can create efficiencies in spending very limited resources and using the limited time of volunteer capacity, or you all, we all have busy lives. So connections, we talked about transportation corridors, roads and bridges. We get from A to B, but from a conservation standpoint, that's sometimes a challenge for wildlife. So that is an issue of both road maintenance as well, it's a public safety issue. Emerald Dash Forward is coming in, and I know your highway crew are already tagging ash trees that are near your roadways, because when ash wood gets brittle, it starts dropping limbs. And so that's a public safety issue along with a transportation issue, along with a conservation issue. Utility infrastructure, maybe there is some that's going to go in here, maybe it is a culvert or a pair to a sewer system. And maybe that's the exact same time to think about energy networks, and how some subsurface energy can be more efficient to the school or other places, or maybe that's when you do think about wildlife corridor connections. Wildlife habitat corridors, we'll be talking a lot more about. Trails, Emily and I heard the other night that there is a great network of trails throughout Guilford. Some of them, the land ownership has changed, and we can talk more about that, it's anecdotal, but are all the connections still being made? Are the snowmobilers still able to get around the routes that you've traditionally enjoyed? Are the cyclists able to get from A to B in a way that are not disturbing property owners? And so maybe there's an opportunity to enhance recreation as well through this process, so it protects private property in terms of people not going onto land where they're not desired, and so it allows recreation and the enjoyment of all the incredible things you have. All ages and all families, you have Guilford cares, you have churches, you have school, you have sports programs, you have scouts. I hear it's an active troupe. When I was a scout, I'm an Eagle, we were a free source of labor for the town, and that was super useful. Tap into that, they need projects, there you go. Yeah, thank you. I'd like to hear more about that, but that's a fantastic opportunity. Other youth groups, and this place right here, I think as much as anything, this community center represents what you all can do, you know, with outside support, but your own sweat and labor and ideas to make happen. Businesses of all kinds, yes, there are your farms, there are your excavators, there are your kennels and your horses, and there are folks, you know, doing something in their home, your home-based business, but of course there are the stores, the body shop, and the ice cream place, and you know, everything else. So we're in July, and any of you, a lot of people are business people, even though, you know, you might not think of yourself traditionally in that way, we're going to also have a, right here, morning of July 8th, a business breakfast, we're all invited to talk about, again, making connections between businesses and seeing if there's any local synergy to happen. Discover Guilford is a great website, already has a lot of information about local businesses, we're just trying to strengthen that. And then communications, back in 2014, that VCRD visit said, yeah, let's start the Guilford Gazette, get that going. And it is now, great. Front Porch Forum, and again, Discover Guilford. And partnerships, the piece of land right north of the country store is partnership between Guilford Preservation Inc. and the community, and you also have a lot of local support from your regional planning commission and the Wyndham and Windsor Housing Trust. Is everyone still hearing? I talked about some outside noise, but that's cool. And past, present, and future, that perhaps is one of the most important connections that we can make, and that's where your knowledge of your community is so important, because what was cherished 50 years ago and 100 years ago, a lot of the same things that are still cherished today and are meaningful, and those are the same things we want to pass down to future generations. And a lot of that is what we're going to be talking about tonight, the land, but it's also the traditions of farming and community, and the relationships that we build, and we want future generations to maybe raise their own families here in Guilford, and what's that going to take? And so that's conserving, right? As much as anything, is retaining those traditions that are meaningful to us as individuals, and having the freedom to perpetuate those into future generations, but also the support from the community to do just that. So we've talked, at least I have, right? You didn't kick me yet, Emily.
You're good.
Yeah. So we would like to go around, though, character is a little hard to define. So is anyone willing to get the ball rolling and tell us what they think character is and what's meaningful?
The character of Guilford is?
Well, Guilford, but you know, town borders, a lot of the conservation recognizes that, okay, yeah, your surrounding communities are all part of watershed and broader corridors, and so it's hard to put a boundary around it. So we're not going to put a boundary around your answer either, in that sense, but you raise your hand.
Yes. Under partnerships, you mentioned the field heading north, down by Route 5. I want to backtrack a little, like I know that you've shared that nothing is, it seems that nothing is planned, nothing is in the process. I'm aware that our theme center is planning for that field, there's the field down by Route 5, there's the portion behind it, which has a lot of wetlands, and I'm curious, I'm confused as to why this is being presented, like there's so much unknown, whether it's actually planned for anywhere from senior housing to multi-level income. So that's a concern that I share. On behalf of protecting, it was Guilford Preservation, so that's confusing.
Sure, sure. And so when you go past that property and you see it now, and they're clearing an area, and it's, I guess, at least that five acres is in hay, and is that part of what you see as the character that you'd like retained, or are you...
The whole thing is character.
Yeah.
That whole piece of land has been hayed, it's had cattle for years, you can see that around the whole piece, so there's not...
It has wildlife, it's pretty big, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Oh, yes, and also, so underwater life, there are deer, that's where they stay over the winter, that's where they have their fawns, fox, everything, you have everything there. So it's years that's been for, anything from cattle to wildlife. And I believe it should be preserved.
Yeah, okay, sure, good, thank you, appreciate that very much.
You're welcome.
I think maybe you mentioned that you are, you heard that, you said there are things planned, even though we've said, you know, there are no plans yet. I can see where that might be a little confusing. Obviously, there's certainly things that are planned within Guilford as a part of this strategic planning process. We don't have within that plan things yet. We want to recognize that, yes, there are different things that are planned throughout Guilford, and what can we, can we learn from that as well? But I think that's, I hope that clarifies that.
Actually, I'd like to, I'm going to ask again, so I can clarify. Are you, so I'm confused, are you saying there isn't a plan to house anything?
There, that is not something that we are currently planning, but we are pulling that in, yes, Jeanette.
I think you should go, you can help clarify this. Why don't you refer to this piece of property in Parkland Road? Actually, Mr. Jewel would be able to speak to it, where he knows exactly what it's about.
You know, Guilford Preservation Inc. was for, I don't know, what, 2011, something like that, to preserve that field basically. The one that's now being hayed, just is hayed, and they're planting flowers in the north end of that. And it's true, we had, since Guilford Preservation Inc. was owned, we've had cattle and goats and other livestock on there. But the original plan, back in 2011, was to preserve the field on Route 5 and to build senior housing on the back part of the land within a five-acre piece. Since the five acres that's on the plan is, when you read to the documentation, is somewhat valuable, we can move that around a little bit, but in the meantime, money's become available, and we've started the process of planning to see what now has to be low-income outfit. We're working on a vibrant understanding with the Wyndham and Windsor Housing Trust to get that moving in terms of feasibility study and start to look for money to build that.
I would like also, an objective is that this is nothing to do with the town, this is private, we own land by Guilford Preservation Inc. This is also not a focus of this meeting, it's good. It's coming up, it's fine, but I think I would really like us to continue and talk about other things and not have this video.
Well, I think it was, she was back-breathing for that, for people to know, really understand what was going on.
And I would like to note that there are, there are a lot of wetlands around the area that, that is a whole lot.
Yeah, that's a big deal, and we'll look at some of the layers, and one of the things, one of the habits I wear is actually wetlands delineation according to the ARPA standards, and they are so critical, absolutely. So thanks for mentioning that. And so this is, this, that property is perhaps a crucible for a lot of what we're discussing. We do want to discuss things more broadly throughout the town, but a lot of, you know, people's feelings come up about these properties which might change, and these properties which are highly visible and have wildlife and, you know, critical habitat areas that are fairly unusual. So thank you for that.
I just wanted to, in some conversations with the different residents today, I feel like it's become obvious that there needs to be an opportunity for members of the community to talk with Wyndham, WWHT, and GPI. So one of the things that I take as my next charge is to hear from people who are concerned about this issue, about what form they feel will be more best for them to be able to discuss their concerns. So this meeting tonight was not intended to address that, however, I'm... However, a lot came up because it also means that the planning commission will take on this mission of creating an opportunity for people like us to have a lot of experience and a lot of knowledge to have a forum to be able to talk directly with WWHT and GPI. And after this part concludes, if you don't come up to me and tell me any ideas you have about how the planning commission can facilitate a productive dialogue, please, I'd like to hear that from you.
Awesome. Character. Good. Yes.
I have a question. I'm really unsure what the living transect is. If you could describe that to me, and also you discussed when you were just opening up about us not having any boundaries and you don't see the boundaries between one state and one road and our dialogue. So I would like to go along with that, so that there could not be any boundaries in our discussion.
Right, right. Well, I'll take the second first.
Can you tell me what the living transect is and how that relates to the land, character density, and permitting the different types of usage such as traditional zoning?
Right, right. Okay, good. I'm glad you asked that. I'll take the second first. So when we talk about wildlife corridors and watersheds and hydrology in a space, that's specifically what I was referencing when I was talking about populations and soil types and rivers don't respect, you know, those boundaries specific to Guilford. And so things go into Halifax or what have you. That's really just what I was talking about. And lack of boundaries on discussion tonight, I think is important. We're not trying to put you all in a box about what you want to say tonight. So that boundary. The living transect, so it's a way of thinking about the different areas that exist within Guilford that are even more wild than one, and it's a continuum. And so the idea of the transect came out of ecology. You can imagine you have your lake and then you have your shoreline plants and your cattails. And then you go up into a meadow and then you get into your early successional forest with your birches, what have you, and some of your smaller plants. Into your maximal forest of your beach and some of that, you know, that line is a transect. And we can think about communities in a similar way in terms of density of what's there. From the most natural areas that are already preserved or land is under current use to maybe agriculture where there's a, you know, the land is used, but it's working lands. Or recreation areas like the fairgrounds, okay? So it's not completely Mother Nature, if you will, but it has some relatively light imprint on the land. And then we can move maybe, in the case of Guilford, into some of your smaller hamlet areas, whether it's West Guilford or Green River. And that's sort of moving along the same idea of the transect. And then perhaps your most dense areas at the other end of the continuum and like your Algiers Village or to some extent where we are now, where there might be services or businesses and other types of things. And so it's actually a way of flipping the whole idea of traditional zoning on its head because we're not talking about that at all. It's actually a way of recognizing patterns in the landscape. And if change is going to happen, and I'm afraid it does, we're not saying what it should be or where it should be. It's really useful to have in a flexible sense, and that's the living part of it, a recognition that there are these different density and character areas of building or not building in Guilford. And that's really all it is. It's a useful tool for thinking about your land. And so perhaps if a builder did want to come in, they have a better understanding of what's important to Guilford in terms of conservation and preservation, these areas at one end of the continuum. Whereas, you know, maybe other areas, okay, well, that's kind of a growth area. And you can frankly tie it to funding, for grants for a lot of things, for if you have infrastructure that needs improvement. The state kind of looks at that sort of planning effort and saying, oh yeah, okay, this is appropriate to fund Guilford for this project because it's a conservation effort and it's going in a place that the town is documented as really important for conserving. Or it's, you know, sewer upgrade coming out of Rattleboro that's really important because it's specific to where there's already sewers. So we're not talking about the extension of that or anything. It's really just an opportunity to recognize what you have and plan for the future and useful way.
So yeah, I was going there. So you were leading me right down to where I was going with that, with the water coming in. And there's the sort of going out way away to Guilford Central Road. And what are the plans for how far that is going to go?
I have no idea.
That's not something that you've been discussing? Like in your first time?
Yes.
And that hasn't come up?
I've heard people talking about it. It's not what we're specifically planning, but what do you think?
I'm thinking it's already gone too far. Because if that's there, why isn't there if there's not a plan for it? Just wondering what the plan is.
Right, yeah.
It's a simple question.
Yeah, it's a good question. And your reaction to its extension is really what we're interested in getting. And so that feeds directly into this discussion of character and conservation because if you build it, that equals, yeah, no, sure, exactly. Yeah, right. Hundred percent. It's hard to deny that. You know, you want to make sure that the people that do depend on it know it's reliable and safe and the pipes are, you know, cleaned out, you know, as they should be or would have been. And so that's why the transect is a useful tool to recognize, yeah, you have these different places in town that are serving people in different ways. And it's sometimes hard to get your head around. And so if we're going to use a tool like that, it would be really to that purpose to try to better understand that, you know, there are differences throughout the community and strong feelings about that. And so how can we honor the people that do enjoy that service to make sure that, you know, their water is safe or they have dependable sewer service? But also hear from everybody about what it might mean and the implications of it. But we don't have personal plans or we're not putting the rabbit in the hat and saying, ta-da, here you go, or anything like that. So thank you. That's a really good question. Character. I have a good character. You bet.
So the roads in Guilford.
Right.
And I hate sleeping in my truck in the sinkholes where that town water comes through. It's a lot of fun. But the dirt roads in this town are amazing. I drive, I've lived here for 20 years and I own two businesses in this town. And I don't think anybody even knows who I am. It's very few people.
Thank you.
It's, it's really, the reason I am here tonight is because of, I heard there's affordable housing going in Algiers Field. And I hate that field for years, Donnie Hartwell. Knowing it was not privately owned, it was part of Algiers. And I fenced that thing for years. And spent time in there and it hurts my feelings to know that there's things happening without people in town even knowing it's a fact.
Sure.
I was saying the affordable housing, and we can have this discussion, whoever's part of that. I would really like to go because I want to get everyone to get some of this. And so the affordable housing that is in this town, I don't know how many people walk into it on a regular basis and talk to those senior citizens and witness what they go through on a regular basis, what they have been struggling through for the last five years. But if you want to have that conversation, I go in that building on a regular basis and I know what's happening.
And that somebody who lives in that area where that affordable housing is and sees the kind of people that come out of that and then now invade my private property and expects me to open up my private property, oh yeah, you can walk through my driveway. It's totally fine.
But on a conservation level.
On the conservation level.
Let me put it on a conservation level, with your affordable housing, those people that live in that building have no space to share amongst themselves outside. And this town is already dealing with being that Wyndham Windsor, which I love fire and stinky yearly. They're already dealing with a private owner in town who are part of that land has overlapped their property. So there's a lot of conservation issues that are already at hand before we take any more steps forward. And we need to take a bigger look at what's really going on. And usually you're asking for it, and that will mean...
I'd rather see a community garden go in there for the people that already live in Old County.
Yes, yeah, there.
It's just...
Where it's right near them.
It's just something that you need to talk about.
But some of them still have cars.
That's true, but community gardens actually came up last week here.
Community gardens are huge.
Yeah.
Because the people living in those buildings don't even have space to put a plant.
That's not helpful.
No, it's not. For mental health concerns and safety of others, it's not, yeah. It's really, really, really not, yeah.
Okay, good. You're taking it.
The characters, the roads, I travel 20 miles a day out into Halifax and Guilford on all the back roads. The town does an amazing job taking care of them and it's just...
And he may have only gone to 20, but I've been here for 48.
Okay. I've been in Vermont my whole life, but Guilford, 20.
No, sure. That's meaningful, just even...
We were fortunate enough, we own a nice piece of land now and have a lot of warrants sold to it and it's got water in it. I would hate to see things change, you know? Talk about recreation and bringing people in. Whether that hollow pond can be taken care of much better than it is and be preserved much better.
I mean, our kind of ones that are doing the work at the pond now just community service working before that, we're still doing it for free.
The state is giving up mowing it and giving up, cutting the brush. Even on the overflow part, if it was to overflow, there's so many trees growing, it would hold all the debris in the air.
Yeah. It's like, that was my dream, I mean, it's moving.
And that's another safety issue. Yeah, sure. I don't know as well as you do, but if you're saying there are issues of flood.
The overflow part.
The overflow part of the commission would be cutting it back.
The soul of the land, does anyone else want, that is really cool. Thank you. Speak to that. How do they feel about like the soul of the place to live?
Yeah, I mean, I feel like Guilford related this, you know? And then we look at Rattleboro and the affordable housing thing coming in. We don't want Guilford to be Rattleboro. That place is going downhill so fast.
Taking a fright in the land. Cool. Does anyone want, yeah, please.
Well, we live on Parkwood Road. We built a house there 20 years ago. My husband was born and raised in Guilford, out where Franklin Farm is now. And when our last kids were out of high school, we wanted to come back to Guilford. Part of the reason we bought that land and built was because of the property across the street. We have grandchildren, we walk through there, we have the deer come into our yard, the bears, the fox, all of those animals. And to think about affordable housing across our way would probably make us leave Guilford and that would break our hearts. But we do not want affordable housing on Parkwood Road. I'm sorry. That's Rattleboro, it's not Guilford. And maybe we live in an area that looks like it should be developed, but I don't think that's the way to develop it. I think there's something that could be done, community garden, whatever, that would value and keep the heart of Guilford. That's what I would say.
I just have another question. I like, I wondered for a long time. I don't know if you folks would have the answer or not. But when nonprofits purchase a parcel of land like that piece we're talking about, if you've accepted, I really can't speak to any of it, but if you've accepted grants, federal funds from another place other than your own, it seems to be my understanding that you made a commitment to where that money came from and that you're almost tied in to having to do what you said you would. In this case, the housing. Am I, is that correct? Do you guys, do you know that analogy? Is that how the funds work?
It depends on the funding source, I would say.
Because that was explained to me a year or two back, that that they, again, there are folks here who verify that. And I have really wondered, does it have to be housing or could it be gardens and something that's natural? Like, I would say planting trees. I would like to be able to be here tonight knowing for the community here to know that answer.
Emily and I don't have the answer. Other folks do.
Yes.
And it sounds like leaving tonight would be really great with all those answers. Who are the others? Sorry?
Who are the others that do know the answers?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just in the middle, I'm telling them.
Great. I have this question. No, no, you're right. Thank you. Others might know those answers, but, and for example, Bill answered a question earlier that we didn't know, but I don't want to put it on the spot or suggest that he does, that another meeting about that specific parcel could take another three hours. I don't want to shut off the discussion of that because it is so important. At the same time, I don't think Emily and I can answer that for you tonight. But if we have a pretty good idea of what the concerns are and how it changes your field and what we think would change about the character of the town and how important it is to you, that is exactly what we want to hear tonight. But in terms of some of the details of the funding or what might go there or the views or what it might look like, we don't know that. And if there's anything like a lot of development projects I'm aware of, that is probably a lot of TBD, as much as, you know, it's hard to hear.
TBD?
To be determined ideas, how things are laid out, what it's going to look like from a certain property, how it impacts this and that. But at the same time, a field that's been hayed for a while where there are foxes and bears and wildlife and, you know, you've had cattle and goats grazing and that kind of vision for the town as you drive by is meaningful to you and other kinds of things and initiatives are important. That is exactly what we want to hear about. It's just some of those details, we really don't know. Maybe even the people that are involved in the project don't yet know because that's kind of how things spin out. And so as Jeanette said, if it's going to be another meeting or two or three meetings, I think that's, that's great. All the better. Yeah, get it over.
Dan, I just want to say like Guilford Center, especially like the community center here, it really feels like character to me to this place. I really like.
Can I mention a conservation issue?
And then one of the other people that haven't had your opinion.
This is really all I want to say about the center area. And I think it's, so Bob Johnson, and we all know this, anybody who's lived in town a really long time knows that Bob Johnson, Bob, the top of Paulsville, Ralph Winchester, many, many, many moons ago, for a really good reason, that, you know, he wanted nothing but the best for the land. And so Ralphie up and moved and gave up his junkyard. And so we are not looking at that, which is, a lot of the people that maybe even the sound have no idea what we have done to conserve. And really appreciate especially that first welcoming into our camp, that beautiful field, that house on the side where it's now, it's that stuffel house and now it's a hairdressing place. And D and E Tree is still kind of a piece of what that was because he gave up the cabins down on Route 5. We're doing all this, you know, preservation and helping composting for everybody. That is the character of the businesses that I support for this town.
Good.
And that said, I hope that this meeting will not die with you, but I think it is.
No, absolutely. And making that possible is a lot of strategic planning is even about. To allow people to do these own things themselves and 100%. And sometimes that means a degree of sort of vitality that they feel enough that, you know, they're not going paycheck to paycheck or looking under the couch cushions for pennies. And they actually can give back and, you know, support local teams, support bake sales at the school, what have you. So that's sort of the vision that I constantly hear. All of you have fantastic ideas about what can happen here. You just need sort of the individual wherewithal and capacity to do it. And that's the way things should work. So thank you very much. As someone who hasn't had the opportunity to talk yet, sir?
One of the characterest things I really have admired about Guilford is the lack of fences.
Lack of fences.
Only around where the dairy farms are or there's some reason to restrict access for safety purposes. Only around where the dairy farms are or there's some reason to restrict access for safety purposes. Otherwise, people don't have fences. They don't have walls except for the old ones from from when this was, uh, all sheep farms. And and I really love that and that it's open and people are allowed to move around. I I really appreciate that as part of the fabric of this community.
Just have to explain a little bit, I moved here because I liked the the combination of open fields, mature forest, really well managed forest, well managed forest. Uh, I just felt that it just felt like home to me when I moved here.
Do you want to be respectful of everyone's time, because we tell the live about the natural resource inventory and other conservation elements we want to get to? So maybe one more person on character and we'll keep moving through. And then we can always come back to that at the end, yeah.
I, where Alawak and I, we decided here, I actually went downstairs to take care of the baby. But we just closed and moved into the house on Partridge Road and we're, uh, we've been in Vermont for many years, but we just decided to plant ourselves, uh, in this community. And we love the character of Partridge Road, the quiet, private nature of the neighborhood. And we're, we were established, we learned that there was going to be a development.
You're back there.
In our backyard, actually front yard, uh, literally. So that's why we're here to express our our concerns.
I think most of us are here for that.
Right on.
Because we all do that and I think we're tired of hearing things last minute. This is why we live here, it's a beautiful community, and that's what we like and we want to stay. We don't want developers, we don't want projects, we want our land. Our homes and natural resources preserved.
Thank you.
This is more.
Let's keep talking about the land and the natural resources.
Uh, I was working for a town once and there was a project going in of about seventy-five homes on about twenty acres. And so it was part of my job to talk to the neighbors and hear, you know, their concerns. Uh, developer have a right to do it, we don't need to get into all that. Uh, I talked to one neighbor and he said, well, can we save this big old red oak here? Uh, because these hawks nest in it every year. And so it wasn't on the neighbor's property, it was on me property, and it's like, all right, I'll go back. And actually, they were able to redesign a wall and bring in an arborist and he airspaded the oak and they cut the roots flush, those that were exposed and ended up fine. But then, you know, so this guy is interested in the hawks. And I went across to the other side of the property and talked to that property on our head, it's a lice pond. And he said, every year, the Canada geese raise their chicks here. But those damn hawks, across the other side, always come in and pick them off. Uh, so that shows one of the challenges, but both of them were like, we don't, they didn't want that. There was a cornfield and part of them recently bought their property is because of the cornfield, you know, it was right there. And so it's real, it's emotional, and one of the most important things is, yeah, just that everyone knows what other people know. And sometimes people don't know, and that's fair enough, right? Uh, but at least to sort of be apprised, yeah, we get it, yeah, uh-huh. Uh, let's talk about this and that a little more.
Yeah, so I'm hearing a lot of emotion here and I I'm feeling it, the room is full. Um, so I'm going to make a figure. Um, I'd like you to describe to the people that may not know already what the Thirty by Thirty Initiative is and that.
Yeah.
And I would really like to have it be as, um, as informative as you can in sticking to what the Thirty by Thirty Initiative is in the state of Vermont.
My hope, maybe Emily, you know a little more, is it's a should. It's an aspiration for by twenty thirty, having thirty percent of the lands in Vermont under current use or permanently eased in some way or public open space in perpetuity, uh, that kind of thing. And in a nutshell, I think that's all it is. It's not a regulatory, uh, statute, if you will, that make, puts any specific requirement on any individual property owner or community. The way I've read the language, the word should is very important, actually, because if it's a should, it's one thing. If it's a shall, it's another. And that's a very important legal distinction, and so it's a, by, yeah, twenty thirty, thirty percent. I don't know what the number is now, so I don't know how much of a heavy lift that is. Uh, but to the extent seeing something like that as concerning, honestly, I think the heavier lift might be the fifty by fifty.
Fifty by fifty.
Sure, yeah. Uh, but it is sort of that star, you know, when we wish upon a star, we're kind of looking above the horizon and hoping for something in the future for ourselves or other people. And I kind of see, when I hear a should, an aspirational language like that, it's trying to lift your eyes, the people that wrote it and passed it, lifting their eyes above the horizon, saying, wouldn't this be fantastic? For a lot of the same reasons we're talking about tonight, and it's maintenance of character and the wildlife populations that we've all grown up with and we want to be here when our children are. My daughter's fifteen, Emily's son is two. Yeah, we want them to be able, we're up with a lot of the open spaces and the lack of fences, uh, that we were privileged to as well.
So fifty by fifty, or, yeah, fifty by fifty, does that mean we give up half of our rights?
I don't think so. Uh, I think, again, it's an aspirational idea that there are all these good reasons to try to conserve land. Uh, and sort of in the places that are building, build in a sort of real compact way so these large tracts remain open. Uh, and so, you know, it encompasses a lot of things, but what it doesn't seem to, and there's a reason I'm not aware, trust me, uh, is that it has any impact on the decisions you make on your property at all because, again, it's an aspirational should kind of thing. And if someone knows more about it than I do, by all means, because, you know, it does inform what we're talking about tonight in an aspirational kind of way. Okay, great. Uh, there was a gentleman from the county, Chris Campeney, who's the director of the Regional Commission, uh, who came in December to talk to the Conservation Commission about some of the assets that Guilford has uh, and talk about some of the tools we might have to sort of drill down a little more into what those might be. Uh, my internet's not working too well, so I'm not going to be able to jump on the A and R atlas. But if you do go, I think I mentioned it earlier, just do an internet search of Vermont A and R atlas and it'll come up, you can find your property, with the caveat that some of the property survey boundaries might be five, ten, fifteen feet off. But you can see the soil types of your property, if they're wetlands, and it helps you make decisions, honestly, about your own property. And that's what, you know, Chris was referring to. And here's another example of should. Vermont's forest land should be managed, uh, so as to maintain and improve forest blocks and habitat connectors. But that's why we did the research. It's easy to say, you know, yeah, this is a great thing, but we're trying to discuss in the NRI documents that's coming out, why? Why does it matter that invasive plants are approaching into our forest edges? And so, well, there's a reason for that. A lot of these plants were brought here because they were tough as nails. They could adapt to a lot of different areas, so they're good for erosion control. Uh, they might have put out a ton of flowers and therefore a ton of seeds. They might have leafed out early, they might have provided a lot of shade. And so plants were brought in from Asia and Europe in the seventeen hundreds and eighteen hundreds, sold in nurseries. And guess what? Putting out a lot of seeds, being tough as nails, uh, leafing out earlier than our natives is exactly why they spread so well. These are really good strategies for spread. But what you do is you combine that with the fact that the native insect population or birds when it's talking about fruit or other insects when we talk about nectar or eating leaves, weren't adapted for these exotic plants coming in. And so a, uh, a Norway maple, which was brought into Philadelphia area in the seventeen fifties, only needs three months to then leaf out again, whereas our native sugars and our reds and silvers need four months. Norway's put out a ton of seeds, but what they don't do is host native insects. They might host three or four species of caterpillars and that, that's it. But a red oak might host three or four hundred species of caterpillars. Uh, and so, yeah, they'll chew on the leaves a little bit and what have you. But just imagine, start moving that up the food chain into all your other animals. And a, uh, a common buckthorn, it actually creates chemicals that keep other, this is a European species, other plants away, uh, in the soil and its fruit are not as nutritious to birds. Uh, birds will eat it and it's actually kind of a component that makes it poop out faster. Uh, but the ratio of lipids to proteins in a common buckthorn berry is not the same or as evolved to be nutritious as a service berry, uh, for example, you know, the native shad bush or dune bush or what have you. And so that means maybe only three eggs in a clutch instead of four. Maybe that means an eggshell that's not quite as hard. So that's why, yeah, invasive species planning and maintenance and management, uh, might seem like it's this high level concern, but it's actually really specific to a lot of things we're talking tonight, uh, about tonight. Uh, and so that's why some of the should is important. It's not a shall, so it doesn't say, you shall get rid of all the Japanese knotweed on your property or the multi-floor rose is a great thing, because that might be. But there's a reason, you know, that we're stewards, we are managers. The cat's out of the bag when it comes to our impact on the land, right, to some extent? Uh, and so, yeah, we should be stewards of our properties and our land and talking to our neighbors about what they're doing on their land for deer wintering areas or what have you, or if they have a beach mask on their property and you have a fence up, but maybe eat the bears and the deer want to get to those beach nuts. You know, those are the conversations that we're trying to facilitate and have, and so that's why should is important. Uh, what the county is able to do is look at some of these connections in these watersheds beyond particular boundaries. They're a really great resource, and so this is just a map, uh, showing that, yeah, they're connecting down, uh, Guilford here, but some of the corridors and connections in the watershed, you know, extend all the way up past, uh, Newthing and it's a somersault. Uh, and the role of the conservation commissions, you know, when we first wanted to talk to Conservation Commission, we were like, they were like, okay, how can we help the process? And so, thank you for hosting this tonight. Uh, that inventory of natural resources that Chris Campeney recommended, already in progress, cooperating with the Select Board and the Planning Commission, road crews. Uh, we understand you have a Recreation Club that does great things, but we also have a Recreation Commission that does great things. So getting them to be on sort of the same page and talking to each other is a useful part of the process that we're in now. And we're just encouraging through educational activities, sort of some of this public understanding of the local natural resources uh, and conservation needs, and that's ongoing, and we want to find out if we can do more. Uh, a lot has been done. Down by that Green River Meadow, that used to be a lot of, uh, you know, junk cars, from what I understand, I saw some photos, cleaned up right before our rain came through and flooded over the banks. And you can only imagine if you had all that fuel and that metal and the rust still there in that place. So that's something that you all did, uh, with some guidance, but the benefit and the timeliness of it was massive and huge. And now it's a beautiful space that everybody can enjoy. Uh, what I'd like to do actually is hop into the Photoshop program briefly and share some of, uh, the work that's getting finalized in the Natural Resources Inventory. And so this is the proposed land use map that's in your town plan. And again, it's sort of a vision based on what exists now, but I'm just using that mostly as a background to help understand, okay, we have these watersheds, can everybody see that? I'm just going to be sort of turning on layers, which you can do in Photoshop, that's kind of cool, and change the opacity of different layers so you can kind of see how everything's going to fit together. A watershed is, you know, you have your high points and your ridges along the edges and everything flows down, you know, to sort of a river. So you have a Fall River watershed with all its tributaries and streams, Broadbrook watershed, which we're in now, and then the Green River watershed that extends to the west. And so this is a map that's, you know, in in that, uh, in your town plan, in fact, uh, and in that, in that document. And then you can start looking at your wetlands. Uh, and we'll try to re, turn off the watershed map. Do you see all the turquoise there? That's your wetlands. And, uh, these are what are called Class Two wetlands, they're three main classes of wetlands. Uh, there's Class One, which are these super rare wetlands and they're only a few around and they're pretty big. They're so critical and important, it doesn't mean other wetlands aren't, but these are what you call Class Two. They're bigger than half an acre, they're connected in some way to other watercourses. Yeah, uh, by all means, take photos. Uh, and, uh, they host pretty unique species. A lot of species depend on certain kinds of plants that only grow in wetlands. They're also one of the places that are most threatened by invasive species coming in because they're susceptible ground. Uh, fragmites or cane, which has sort of that wavy top to it, is taking over a lot where the cattails are. And the cattails, you know, we can eat the shoots of cattails, uh, are part of the ecology that's evolved around here. And so recognizing where wetlands are is really important. Also, understanding how the wetlands then relate to, and this is a map that's in the NRI document, uh, to wildlife connections. And so when you're looking at road systems and wetlands and wildlife connections, you can start seeing, once we overlay these layers of information, we're starting to get some really useful data to understand relationships, uh, really better. And then that NRI document talked a lot about the species composition and the different forest blocks that you have and discusses their relative rarity in the entire state. Guilford is relatively low, you know, I think governance now might be sixteen, ten in terms of elevation. And so that means certain plants and species, uh, that thrive in slightly warmer areas right now are coming through here as compared to places further north or higher up on some of the ridges. And so an understanding of these corridors and how they might be coming up from the south, where they might be trying to cross roads or head along the ridge is really important. You start tying that into continuous forest areas for breeding populations and wetlands areas for certain types of species that are then food for other species, what have you. A pattern emerges that can help you make decisions on your own properties. And potentially, when we're thinking about planning as a community, you know, where can the community assist initiatives for conservation? Uh, ag lands. Now that's this sort of brownish layer, uh, right there. Uh, that color would probably have been, you know, ten or twenty times as much fifty years ago or a hundred years ago. You can see how fragmented they are. These are often the best well-draining, relatively flat lands. Uh, they're often what's called real primaticultural soils. Uh, they have some of the calcium richness that you have here in Guilford that are really good for a bunch of crops and their uptake. And so how do those ag lands relate to rivers? Are some of the lower lying ag lands getting flooded? Which is something that I know is happening along the Arctic, for example, it's been wet the last fifteen years. Some of these agricultural lands are actually getting flooded and so, or they're just too soggy to put in the same crop. And so when we're talking about conservation, so, okay, but can we do things to assist these traditional industries that are relied on well-draining lands within our watersheds requires an understanding of the watersheds. And maybe the wetland areas that are taking some of that excess flow, or we want them to, uh, from the river so we can help preserve these great soils and their working lands. And so there's sort of a web that happens. And now, uh, let me try to up the, I'm going to take off the forest blocks one for now. But I don't know if you can see this, uh, lighter beige, okay, that's the ag land's use value appraisal. It's a little light beige, so I'm going to do something here in Photoshop. I'm going to add what's called a stroke around it. And then you can maybe start seeing that a little better, yeah. Uh, these are lands that probably contribute to the thirty, Thirty by Thirty, because they're in current use. And so individual property owners of thirty acres or greater have said, yes, for tax purposes, I want to put my land uh, into a kind of an easement, sort of with a promise that I have no plans to build on it. I, every ten years, I need to have someone come take a look at it to see if there's something we can do in terms of the stewardship of the land, that as a result, my tax burden is lessened. And so this is really good to know about. You can go on this map, uh, and see, okay, well, my neighbor isn't in current use, but have, and they have thirty-five acres. have 35 acres. Maybe I'll have a conversation with them because now we have a larger area because it's important, the flood resilience in wildlife and for every good reason, and for a tax break to have both of our lands in current use.
Dan, you have a question back here.
Yeah.
I know that my father used to have our land in current use.
Used to, yeah.
Well, because it was divided almost his children.
Oh, okay, sure.
The land that I bought was my great-grandparents'.
Oh, that's cool.
Yeah. So I'm here. Not because I couldn't buy land, but because I bought it from him. So that's just the way it works. So I guess my question is talking about easement and tax, you know, buffer by having current use. But how much are you talking? Because today's market, it's not my understanding. It's not necessarily worth it.
Okay, so if something else were done with the land, you might realize a lot greater benefit. So there's some values behind it, two personal values, a certain ethic toward the land that has to be part of the picture. I guess if it were strictly a dollars and cents argument, yeah, finding an opportunity to develop that land.
No, I don't want to develop anything. I'd love to have it in current use, but I don't see the benefit in my taxes to do it. It's not really that feasible. So that's why I'm like, you're mentioning it, so I just was wondering if you could...
Does anyone else have their land in current use and can speak to the dollars and cents?
No, I can't speak to the dollars and cents.
Yeah.
So you get a nice tax break for like keeping your land in current use.
Do we know how much that delta is? And is going through the process and having someone under the land worth it, I guess, is part of the question?
Most people seem to think so.
Well, if you look at that, that's a fair number to do.
So...
We have 72 acres and 56 is in current use and we save $13,000 a year.
13 a year?
13 a year.
For 56 acres in current use?
Roughly, yeah.
Did getting it, was it enough of a challenge to get it into the program?
Roughly, it's in current use when you purchase it.
It was, okay.
Do you have to have a...
Current use is, the assessed value of the land in current use is 10 times smaller than land divided.
Okay.
So my property is 16 acres, so I'm not available for current use, but that's fine. But, you know, so the assessed value. But land is not taxed very heavily, do you know for it? So that, you know, it makes any difference, whereas, as I was just pointing out, you have to have a lot of land to make it a huge difference. So, you know, 100 acres, 70, you know, 7 acres, there are tremendous amount of land built that is in current use.
Yeah.
And it was originally designed for agricultural land so that farmers had really a tax break on the land that they used in their business.
Right, I guess that's kind of that forestry at some point.
It's kind of worst at this point, so it's more land that's owned by people and they just want to conserve it for one reason or another.
Right, but there's no real value unless you have lots of it. Is that what I'm understanding? Because that's how I'm feeling.
Well, you have 27 acres, so if you have more than 27 acres, then you're open to putting your property in current use. Now, you have to have the plans and the plant has to be in all of that. So you have to have, 25 acres is the amount of land and then you have to have 2 acres for the long-scope.
Yes.
Okay.
So it's 27 acres. If you have 27 acres and you can't be in current use, you have 26, the program's not available.
Is that it? Yeah?
I could give you some other concerns.
Okay.
I was just going to mention the conservation commission can help if you have questions about conservation easements, current use and all those things related to being steward for your land. And we are planning a workshop in the fall that discusses a whole range of conservation strategies or tools that people can use, including possible funding sources. So just so people know that we at the conservation commission is a resource for these questions.
Thank you. That's excellent. Does anyone have any questions or do you have anything to add about the overlay process and how it informs planning?
So can you use the new percentage of what's conserved?
We could. We could put this into AutoCAD, for example, and, you know, take a square and add in a few more.
Well, you couldn't do it just from what we have available.
Not live here at 12:00.
Well, AutoCAD, how many people are on it?
It's in the natural resource, that statistic is in the natural resource, I mentioned, the percentage of why I'm in current use.
Oh, in current use, yeah.
And the percentage that is conserved under conservation.
Yes. I mean, if I had to eyeball it, I'd say it's about a quarter, 25, 30%. Yeah, great. Any other thoughts about this?
Do you have an overlay map that shows what buffers zone is recommending along some of the major waterways like the Green River or Broadbrook? A buffer zone on the edges of it should reduce erosion and the risk of, like, with the, like, I do, tearing up a property totally.
Right, I don't have that map overlay, but the recommendation, it depends on what it is, might be, and so I don't know if those regulations outside of a project that bumps up against Act 250. I don't know if there are any regulations that exist, but it might be 50 feet for a smaller stream or a smaller wetland patch to 100 feet, you know, for something wider. And it's not just the distance, as we all know, it's what we're doing in that space. One of the things that's interesting is phosphorus, which gets into ponds and causes algae blooms and shades out the water, and then bacteria come in on the dying algae and plants, and then you have an issue of public safety and dying fish. Phosphorus binds with soil particles really well. The other thing in a fertilizer is nitrogen. It turns out that's more of a saltwater phenomenon, but in freshwater, phosphorus binding to soil particles. So you can imagine if you're, for example, this is a choice, you can make mowing right up to a whole swath of your stream side that's on your property. It makes it easier during a major storm, not only to scour the edges and cause erosion, but that's where maybe if you're also fertilizing your lawn or your crop or your garden, what have you, can run off, find a soil, get it to the water system, make its way to ponds and cause these algae blooms. And that's kind of what happens. And so part of the resource that is the conservation commission is understanding, okay, well, maybe it's 10 feet that I can put in nutmow and, you know, plant something or keep the grasses taller, what have you, so at least that runoff slows down and settles and I'm reducing the nutrient load in the stream. I don't have the exact numbers for you on any given place.
There is a map of stream corridors.
Stream corridors, yeah.
And then maybe online, I'm not sure.
That website that Dan mentioned, the ANR Atlas, that does have a lot of the buffers in there as well. And the Mont Department of Natural Resources has some really wonderful resources as well for homeowners in managing some of those natural resources on their property, recommendations for if you have a stream or a pond, what might you do to increase stewardship of it, whether it's some of those mowing practices or adding plantings around the edges as buffers?
Sometimes it's just directing your animals if they're drinking from the stream in a certain way, sort of being intentional about them going to a certain place, and then maybe moving back to your minimizing erosion, other low-mow practices. Also, we know a lot of animals that live in and around streams need a shaded stream for a lot of the year, whether it's otters or fish. And so you're also doing right by them, perhaps, if you can choose, if you have a stream corridor to plant shrubs, woody shrubs right next to it. If you combine that with maybe some fruit-bearing, American cranberry bush fiber, and this fruit you can make jelly out of it and you can plant it next to your stream, it'll be really happy there. And so, you know, a lot of these are sort of win-win in terms of just stewarding your land.
Yes, I live in Green River and there's two concerns I have. Invasive species of Japanese knotweed, so they're taping the banks of the river. And I eradicated it or tried to from one area and looked great, but the root system is so deep and it came back almost immediately. And you say good stewardship, but it's out of my control. But it's doing, it's damaging to the natural habitat, it's choking out the natural habitat flora. As you said, the wildlife is changing because of it. My other concern is people along the river, we have beavers that will build little dams off to the side and people don't want them there and so they have them removed. But I enjoy driving to work and looking out and seeing the little ones playing, but then one day they're all gone. And I don't know, how do we work with that?
Sometimes as neighbor to neighbor, certainly beavers have a pretty unique impact on the land and they, it's actually discussed in this document, this report. You know, 500 years ago, they had a much bigger impact on the land before trapping, you know, furriers started. So you can only imagine that we're just seeing a relatively small part of what historically beavers did. I have mixed feelings sometimes, too, about beavers. Yeah, certainly, yeah, they're tough enough. But conveying your feelings to whoever might be doing that. And there are other people in the state, fish and wildlife people, that may have a solution to that issue that doesn't involve trapping or poisoning or killing, not knowing what's happening and on what timeframe. Sometimes challenging to reach someone, you know, in a timely way when the land's being altered by a beaver, you know, today. No, I appreciate that. Thank you also for sharing about your feelings about beavers, because they're an interesting species.
A lot of times the beavers are relocated.
A hundred percent.
A lot of times they are live-trapped and relocated. I've done it myself for other people instead of killing them.
How do you do that?
Live-trapped.
Have her trapped? Have her trapped and get them and at the right time...
Oh, get them closed in and you can take them.
Where do you bring them, may I ask, or is that an industry secret?
They're trapped.
To other ponds where they exist all the time.
Okay, yeah, sure.
Let them figure it out.
Well, that's our just natural.
Actually, if you're going to move beaver, you have to get the cable to help it do that.
This was all with cable?
Yes.
I can also try to address some of the, your question about the Japanese knotweed. I'm standing so I can actually see you. That, you're right, that's, in my opinion, one of the toughest invasions because it loves those stream banks so much. And I just, you know, I live along the third branch of the White River and I just see it covering. It's really tough and you're right, it really does kind of hinder our ability to be stewards of the land. One of the, I haven't tried this myself, and Dan, with your work in invasions, might know a little bit more about this, but one of the studies that's being done on how to control Japanese knotweed is using this mesh matting. Basically, you cut it down to the ground, put this matting down so when they try to re-sprout, it basically strangles them. It is intensive and it is costly. But that is, so far I've heard, one of the few seemingly successful methods. So maybe if that's something that you could, if you have a property that has a small patch of it, perhaps test on there, see if that, if that works. Yeah, but that's, thank you for bringing that up. It's super tough and it's a big problem for the pond, that's why.
Several years ago, there was an organization, and I'm not sure who they were, they came through and they tried to pull it up and they were putting it in bags and leaving it, but it didn't make any effect at all.
Sometimes pulling can actually be worse dealing with invasive species because invasive species would really like disturbed soil. So when you pull it up, you're actually disturbing the soil and giving the seed bank kind of perfect condition to re-sprout. So sometimes, you know, some recommendations are just continued, for certain species, continued mowing very regularly so the plant just kind of gets tired and loses that energy to continue.
Yeah, cut it back five times a year for five years and you'll be able to control it. If you have the energy, we do that, but that's...
Five times a year.
Five times a year for five years. But it reduces like mowing and all of other things, so any little fragment of it can taper and make a little problem.
Yeah, it's kind of a jerk.
Yeah.
And if you're going to different places on your property, if you do mow, then lose down your blades. If you're then going to a place that doesn't have any, it might be sensitive because that happens. And in some communities where we work, a lot of it is working with the road crews to time the mowing and also cleaning off their blades if they've just mowed through a path to knotweed and try to get it before it sets seed in September or so. But it's a tough one, especially if you're near waterway or uncomfortable using mechanicals and that kind of thing, which we always caution people about. But you talked about the challenges of stewardship and, yeah, we're not some great naturalist people all the time in the world, but we do what we can. And so one idea that I like is you have your yard and maybe you have your maintained yard area or turf or whatnot in your gardens. You put up just a string a few feet in back if it has invasive plants, or you just sort of rope off a little area and you just deal with that and be happy with that. And if that's enough to do something that's manageable, it's a lot better than nothing, and maybe in a couple of years, okay, well, maybe I'll move out a little further or maybe I'll plant something new in that and so that can establish its root system and the invasions won't come back in. And so we just do what we can. And if you want a path through the woods, just create a path through the woods and be happy. If you want to invent a place to put a bench after walking through the woods for a little while, great. But invasions are such a big problem. It's almost hard to get your head around. And so anything you can do is fine, even if it's frustrating, you know. Any other thoughts about what you all do on your own property to connect with the land? Because that's in a way what we're talking about, yeah.
So I own a piece of property down Broadbrook, because right by the town garage heading into town. If you look to the left, the last storm created a huge mess and a lot of trees are blocking the burrow, which my concern is in the future, stuff that washes down is going to cause flood. How do I get that to, who am I going to be able to remove that thing, oh, I'm not supposed to?
Right, in a way, it's sort of natural and does what it does, but I think you have pretty legitimate concerns because once sediment starts gathering up there, then things start growing and suddenly you basically have done what the trees are doing, what a beaver might have done. Anyway, and I know there are people at the county that could possibly come out or offer you legitimate advice.
If you look a little bit closer, there's a ton of trees from that storm.
Yeah.
All the way down on the left, if you look, that is going to interfere with the road.
Was, when, when... This wasn't in March, was it?
All kinds of stuff.
Is this the one back in March? Yeah, and I know the crews, at least the utility crews were out doing, moving the trees that were specifically impacting, you know, the service. But that doesn't speak to a trail or a waterway or what have you. I'm not sure what specific policy needs to be or should be followed. If it were my land and I saw a stream backed up, you know, I might try to do whatever minimally possible thing to do is keep that stream going.
I don't know how many times you've been in that book.
Yeah.
And we can't fight with 100 trees that are down in there now.
The county, your county forester might be a good...
Yeah.
Good resource as well.
People down below are going to...
They're talking about a huge brook.
Yeah.
It's a huge brook. If you can't touch it, you're not allowed.
If they were small, you can't touch it, it's natural. That's right.
That's why I was saying county forester, because they would, they would know kind of the regulations and perhaps how to deal with, deal with that, knowing that it's, yeah, you have these environmental kind of regulations that you can't touch it, but at the same time, it could become a public safety factor.
Imagine if that broke back up and all the water was over there, it's broken.
And that's a really important, yeah. So maybe that's the angle there, because when it comes to sort of government oversight of things, they have a certain brief about health, safety, welfare, right? And so welfare might include to some degree, you know, the appearance of things and certainly, but when we're talking health and safety, in my experience, that's always up here. And as much as, you know, we're doing things out in nature with trees and plants, and you all are here tonight... all are here tonight, if public safety isn't first on the list, then, you know, I'm not sure what we're really doing then. It always has to be, so maybe that's the angle. And not that you haven't tried that, but you know, if the county forester can offer some insight that you have some very serious public safety concerns about a flood hazard, I'd recommend if you haven't yet to try that route.
Yeah, especially after, you know, Irene and whatever, whatever it would like washed out.
Sure. And that honestly sounds, a hundred trees, that is a lot. And that is really major. And so I'd like to think that would get on somebody's radar really pretty quickly if that is, yeah. Any other thoughts about the overall, anyone wanna take any other pictures of it? Brian here is with Breslau Community Television. This video is gonna be available. I'm not sure if he got this shot, but I'm gonna be sending Brian some of these images like this so he can pop it in the video as a reference point. While we're here, this is kind of what the A and R Atlas looks like when you open it up and you can, you know, go on down to Guilford. Like I said, it's taken a real long time and you can go on a certain property and look at that. But we're gonna move along with just some of the last discussion items that would be useful for us to help you. And then it sounds like a big issue, yeah, is the habitat and what happens, but everything related to it, the stream corridors, which have to do with storms, which have to do with building, the habitat in terms of existing parcels of land that are dear to us, that are cherished, that we really not want to see changed. Invasive plant encroachment, we talked about that. Japanese knotweed's definitely one of the worst. Loss of native species diversity and a lot of that feed because of that web in the food chain. Once you start losing certain keystone species, you know, we can go back to the wolf and see the classic example of that. Now we see what deers are doing to our forest and our coyotes moving in. And so what we do want, just like anything, the more we have of different opinions and different people that are healthy and thriving, the better and stronger we are. And that's the same for different species of animals and plant and fungus and bacteria out in, you know, some of these areas we're trying to conserve. Lickens are a combination of like bacteria and a fungus living in a single organism, two kingdoms. And then it'll attach itself to a plant or a rock and slow, okay, that's an aside, right? Is there anything else that we feel are near-term threats to the nature and the wilder places of Guilford?
Climate.
Climate.
Fire.
Fire. All right. Have there been experiences or specific concerns that make you might say that?
I'm just saying, yeah, just with, like fires happen in Canada, just our summer's getting hotter, September's getting hotter.
Well, and floods.
Fire and floods.
And development.
Locusts.
We talk, you know, endlessly about development.
Yeah, sure, okay. Yeah, that's a big one. Yeah, if building's gonna happen, if building's gonna happen, that is a threat potentially if it coincides with a bottleneck corridor or a wetland and what have you. Yeah. Are there near-term threats to the ecology in Guilford?
The spraying of chemicals, aluminum and other chemicals into the air to control the weather patterns and our, the growth of different populations in that soil.
Soil of chemicals?
The chemicals sprayed into the atmosphere.
Into the atmosphere, getting into soil, getting into the waterways and the lack of knowing exactly what's in them and, you know, and all that, the thought behind it, sure. Yeah, thanks. Are any roadside?
Yeah.
That's where I was seeing.
Had I known, I'm happy about a house that was built in Guilford. I'm really excited about it. I'm pleased it was a local family that built the house. It didn't matter who, I get it. But I think if I knew that it was going in, I would have liked to have an opportunity to have a conversation and take the four acres of ramps that got destroyed. My belt, it killed me to see that happen. And it's fine, I do now, but I think when it comes to conservation of new growth, to look at the decades and the century old soil that we have here, like I could take it for some nice plots. And it really kills me to see that because it takes, it takes almost a decade for them to really produce. I just think like that would be a great conservation piece when somebody wants to build something new, like you're talking about conserving things. Fine, this piece of property would be wonderful, but let's just remove, let's take all these ramps and we know we're gonna be there and just put them somewhere else so they can, you know, be most decomposed, other trees that then can still grow. And a lot of people, you know, try to commission or not a lot to dig up ramps.
Sure. Can you think of a way that that could have happened, that you could have had that conversation?
If I, if I knew.
Yeah.
Like it was just one of those things, like it makes sense to degree what you are trying to establish with the community and I get that, is just making the whole community, Guilford is more land than people and it's gorgeous and I love the concept of conserving it. But I think it also just means that to talk to each other, like ask before we do something. Like if I were to move to St. Albans onto a, just that, you know, this piece in the middle of no man's land, it just feels kind of right to say, is there anything I might not know about? Like all the pink lady slippers that might come up this spring? Or, and some people are like, whatever, but to me, you know, it's been a lot to just move those things because they don't just come up with jack and hold this, you know, I can name off a thousand foraging plants that this town is spilling the spore.
I just wanna say that the Guilford Conservation Commission wanted this natural resource inventory so that people moving into the area would know what's there.
I'm just one of those people, I'll just come knock on your door and be your neighbor instead of going to the town office.
One thing that will happen is that everyone will consult this natural resource inventory. And I would love it if people who are new to town or just bought a property here were told about it.
Yeah, and they would appreciate it.
To consider, ask to consider what they're doing before they go rip up a hole.
And they get it, and things can be moved and shifted. I mean, I get the concept of conservation and, you know, call it, so just to put that out there. So I didn't know that that was the case, how are we?
Or, yeah, or someone's looking at, has a piece of property, looking to build their house if they have someone with local knowledge who says, well, this portion of the property has all of these things, maybe consider a different portion of the property. Or, yeah, or bringing in someone that can, if that's not possible, bringing in someone who can assess what the plants are and say, okay, what can we do to preserve or relocate these?
Yeah, as a homeowner and the way the world works, you all have the right to do what we, I guess what we want. But yes, if they understood, if some of the times people understood that there's some beneficial factors more to their property than even realize, like.
They might not realize.
They might, you know, they just, it's all good.
But do you like to go along with those, right, some sense of responsibility? That sort of, yeah, the flip side, sure. But sometimes knowing what you might be responsible for requires knowledge.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Try to know.
Right, good, thank you. And so I think we've kind of covered this bullet point quite a bit, but if anyone else right now has sort of a wish for what the community might look like in terms of what we cherish today, another 50 years or 100 years, you know, share, now this is fantastic. I know folks have shared a lot of concerns and things and we get a sense of what this might be, but does anyone else wanna talk about your vision yet?
I think, I'd like to, are you folks, it sounds like there might be more meetings. Is that?
I heard it's a lot.
So one thing.
Trying to get the business community so it is huge up together here in the morning.
One thing that I recently have read, but I'm not gonna sit here and try to speak to it, but it sounds like you folks have the knowledge and resources. Because I think the Planning Commission, the Conservation Committee, and people can always learn, is development really leads to like our problems with climate change and across the nation, areas are drying up. There was a whole article that I read about how development actually affects all our natural resources. And I think that besides talking about a little, you know, a piece of land here, a piece of land there, if you're taking and keep developing and taking from and not giving back, that's a bigger problem. And I think that this, this town would benefit from hearing, what are those facts, like from people like yourselves who have that knowledge?
Sorry, in terms of where things are happening on the ground?
No, as in what, what happens every time you clear a field or you clear the trees around it and the field? There was a whole study that I, again, I am not gonna speak to it, but there are people out there who can. It sounds like you folks might be able to have that knowledge and I think that it needs to be expressed.
Sure, good. A lot of things we talked about tonight is one of them's habitat fragmentation. And so if there's a home here surrounded by 20 acres and then another one here and another one here, when you do bring a machinery, compact soil that affects roots. So in a way, any movement of heavy equipment over soils that have been developing over tens of thousands of years will really change. You know, most of soil on your ground, good healthy soils have open pores. And that's where oxygen, because the roots use oxygen, need to use carbon dioxide and water are stored and the find root systems and the fungus, a little bit of them need those open pores. When you travel through a landscape with a relatively heavy piece of machinery or put something on it or even walk a certain area a lot, you change that. And so just building in general and how it happens is gonna do some of that. Depending on where you're setting things, we're talking about buffers. So often people do wanna be right along the water side at the edge of the pond. And so what's the impact on soil erosion? There are a lot of these trees, Norway maples. I love the purple version of the Norway maple. It's a gorgeous tree. My daughter asked me, what's my favorite invasive tree? And I would say the crazy Norway maple. It's a gorgeous, hardy now street, but it has this adverse impact when we're talking about insect populations on the surrounding ecology. And so I don't know, you know, we could keep going, there are a lot of other things about patterns of development and the digging of the roads, you know, that sort of seem to be frogging development as well. That can, that can happen, especially, you know, when we're talking various property ownership regimes. So where's the water coming from? Are you drawing downstream? A lot of people get, you know, water from well, of course, you know. But how does that change the groundwater and, you know, the streams? So yeah, there are gonna be impacts. A lot of them seem to be adverse impacts. And so I guess we wanna make decisions with as much knowledge as possible to know that maybe there are better choices.
Right, because the property that you, we first started mentioning, the homes on that road, I believe it's fair to say a lot of people are on wells. And I wonder, I imagine that this housing development would probably affect people's water resources.
Where that water comes from, the hydrology of the space. I mean, even just changing how the water flows across the landscape is gonna have a change. Now, there's this idea of, okay, well, change, what is it? How much can we tolerate in nature? How resilient is the natural community to be able to withstand it? A fire comes through, sometimes it is natural and some plants require fire actually, you know, for their seeds to germinate. And so, you know, it is a tough one, but when we're also talking about bringing just character and investment, you know, yeah, it's a big deal. And so I think trying to have more, it sounds like, public discussion of what we know about that property would be a great idea.
I appreciate that, thank you.
My wish for Guilford, one of my wishes, and I'm on the Conservation Commission, is that people who have lived here traditionally can still afford to live in Guilford 50 years from now. And ultimately that means more housing options for people. So I'm very concerned about balancing the need for getting more housing available for people with the need for conserving land and taking all the things into discussion that we have talked about so far, but it's, it's a big factor as well. So many people, the children of people who grew up in Guilford cannot afford, there's no place for them to live in Guilford at this point and they're living far away, so that's an issue.
That's a huge issue. I also feel the aging population and so.
And me, I'm literally six, I can't visit my house, not much longer and where am I gonna go with this?
Any other thoughts about Guilford in 50 years and conservation, Jeff?
Well, it's interesting because we, we live in a town with, like you said, with a lot of, as far as like to take the town plan, for instance, it's a plan with a lot of like shoulds and this is, it's more prescription of just like how we wanna see it, which is nice. And like these sorts of community engagements are great because as a collective, as a town, we can talk about it because it's not necessarily like regulatory thing, but we can look at our neighbors and say like, this is what's important to you and this is what's important to us. Because, yeah, we live and we're very unique. We live in a place that doesn't have this oversight. But as a community, we do need to come together and talk about what's important to one another. And I think that, yeah, it's key for us, as a community, because housing does mean it. Like we definitely need housing and we need to conserve. We need some places where the housing needs to be and where things need to be conserved and we need to see that.
Anyone else tonight that hasn't had the opportunity to say the piece that wishes And there it is, yeah. And recreation, it's the only way we have the places to play and for kids to grow up in a healthy way and get outdoors and run around and for us to walk trails or take out our snow machine and what have you. Yeah, if there's any sort of image perhaps we could leave you with this evening, it's that so many of these things are interconnected in such a critical way that why not through this strategic planning process, try to bring those strands together just to be wise about the decisions that are gonna be made? And that's really kind of our mission in high level, is try to pull all those strands together so they start making sense with each other in a better way.
I was thinking about your earlier question about character and how the character of the town is, the definition that you were looking for was about land. And I think because of your emphasis on interconnectivity, that to just isolate the land from the people is somewhat artificial. And one of the biggest threats to us as a town, not building a better, more sustainable, beautiful Guilford in 50 years, is how many people are here tonight in a town of 2,000? And so one of the best things we can do to prevent a real threat to our future is to get more people involved. And so everybody that's here, please talk to your friends and your neighbors and your coworkers and have them come to these meetings and participate and say your voice matters.
Put up the sign that says big town meeting for this and right across from the blueberry house. It seems to grab a little bit of attention.
And just to follow up on that too, I think that it's important that those who are on commissions that are making choices, who are making choices for, for us to us, need to make sure they're not doing it in a vacuum, but they need to make sure that they're doing it in such a way that it is publicized and that the town knows that this is happening. You know, one reason why we've got, I think apparently it's not for any other 2,000, but it's a very good, a very good showing, I think, tonight. And one of the reasons was that it was publicity and there was word of mouth getting it out that this was happening and how important it was. So I think that that needs to be in the future too. And all this kind of thing, maybe to open it to the public and publicize.
Maybe you can take out the folks I may think might disagree with you. I think it's really important to hear all sides. So I don't know, you know, who's on the commission. I had no idea. I heard about this through just word of mouth, but I know. this through just word of mouth, but I know, you know, sometimes we kind of connect with people that we want to hear the same kind of agreement, and that motivates us. And I think it's really important for us to talk to people who might challenge us.
I feel like we're perming our opinions, because there's some definite different opinions of how we should be developing and planning our town, because I, one of the things that I enjoy about where I am in the world is that it is open space and it is underdeveloped, and the fact that there's already two housing developments in my area and we're thinking about opening up and putting more scares me, because I've always felt as a neighbor in that area that, oh, you know, I'll be a good neighborly person and I'll open up half of my trail and allow people to walk. But now that it's more diversified, I'm to the point where I'm ready to put posted signs up and say, nope, nope, sorry, if you can't respect my land and respect my wishes, then I'm going to take it away from the people that do.
Right. Well, so, good, thank you for sharing that. Yeah. Sure, a lot, you're speaking with a lot of people.
Yeah, I mean, and I don't mean to pass stereotypes on people that are in low status in housing, but when those housings came in, they were, they were hot here towards more to people that, seniors that couldn't afford it and whatever, but now there's more of a diversified, instead of just the senior housing, it's more diversified, and there's different types of people coming into my property.
Interesting. Yeah, and that sounds like something that we and I, Emily and I, need to go more about as well. And so thank you all for bringing up some really core issues about what's going on in the community. Yeah, that's good stuff. And I think we've talked a lot about the communications and how good this is, because of course people who have disagreements should be speaking with each other. I mean, that's kind of the point. That's the only answer to getting things done well.
That's what democracy is.
Yeah, and it's so essential that folks just feel comfortable doing it, so thank you for coming out this evening, sharing your strong feelings and your ideas and your insights about your property. And what we should know is part of what we're doing here tonight, what we're going to do with business people and other conversations that we have with you all. And I'd love to walk your land, like I said, sure would, if you have ideas about it. So thanks very much.
And I just want to say that we have, the next open meeting will be a business, not business lunch here on John A.
Breakfast.
Breakfast, breakfast, yes, A to Z. That's practice, not lunch. We have yet to determine other public forum meeting dates, but there will be more, and thank you for putting up the sign, that's brilliant, we will make that. So, again, I'm a chair of the commission, I'm still learning. We really thank all of you for being here this hot evening and sharing your emotions and your experience for Guilford. It's great to hear the first few words, thank you so much. And we will follow up and make sure that we're able to, the W H G and G P I and you to talk about the heart of Guilford and that.